Good morning, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Orange County Board of Supervisors meeting for December the 13th, 2016. A listing of changes to today's agenda, along with agendas and request-to-speak forums, are located on both sides and at the back of the room. The board will be breaking for lunch around the noon hour, during which time we will also recess into closed session. In addition, Agenda Items 62 and 63 have a time certain of 1:30, at which point we will take these items regardless of where we are in the agenda. We'll now move to the public comments portion of the agenda. At this time, members of the public may address the Board of Supervisors on any or multiple items on the agenda, excluding public hearings, or on any issue that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. This is the only opportunity for public input except for scheduled public hearing items. Comments shall be limited to two minutes per person and 20 minutes for all comments. We have a number of speakers that wish to speak this morning on a number of topics, so we're cutting it down from three minutes to two minutes to accommodate everyone who would like to speak. When you are called to speak, please step to the podium, and we request that you state your name and city of residence for the record. Please note the light on the podium; the green light means that you have two minutes. The light changes to yellow when you have one minute left, and the light turns to red when your time is up. We ask that you observe the time limit so that all who wish to speak will have an opportunity to do so. When addressing the board, please address the board as a whole through the chair; comments to individual supervisors or staff are not permitted. Madam Clerk, would you like to begin with the speakers?
Yes, we have 76 requests. First four speakers, if you can line up behind the podium. Chris Murray.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. It's a pleasure to join you this morning, and I want to speak to the Item Supplemental 58B with regard to the agreement for the homeless shelter and full-service center for the homeless in Anaheim. And if I may begin, Lucy Dunn also wanted me to express the Orange County Business Council's support as well, and encourage -- they encourage passage of the operation plan today and continue -- encourage the county to continue to support the good work of Mercy House in implementing real solutions for the homeless population in our communities. I want to echo her words and say that Mercy House has also been a great partner of the City of Anaheim to date with their help, with the help of CityNet, which are many partners that have come together in the nonprofit and public agency realm to serve the homeless in our city. We have helped to provide permanent housing for 621 individuals who were homeless over the last two years, either reconnecting them with family or finding them permanent housing. So there are solutions in place, and our collaboration as a city and with cities across North Orange County, with all of you and with the county staff, to ensure real solutions for the homeless population is making a real impact, and we're so pleased by your leadership and support in this area. I am also speaking here today on behalf of my colleagues in Orange and Fullerton, both Mayor Fitzgerald and Councilmember Whitaker, in asking, as you consider this item today, to please seriously consider the full and expeditious construction of the facility so that we can also be assured of, for those it would serve, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods, the full implementation of the operations and maintenance plan and the community oversight that was committed to the general public as well. This facility will represent the first countywide, and I know you all know this, but just want to reiterate, the first countywide full-service year-round homeless shelter. It is something that is significantly needed. I think red means "I need to go," so let me just wrap up. It is an important facility, and our ability to both serve and keep our commitments to the general public so that additional facilities will have the goodwill and trust of the public is important. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Supervisor Nelson?
Councilmember Murray, thank you for coming. Just real briefly, I did get a letter that was sent by kind of Fullerton, Anaheim, Orange. I just want to make sure that we're all understanding each other. The operational plan and the community oversight is not necessarily a brick-and-mortar decision.
Right.
I mean, you know, you could have a real extensive plan and operate it, for that matter. So I just want to make sure the understanding from our board in trying to phase it, where things like a commercial kitchen are a $1 million ticket, and although we may not have that million or be ready to quite put a commercial kitchen in yet today, it doesn't mean there won't be full food service and that sort of thing. So I just want to make sure that what you believe is the full implementation of the plan and the community oversight doesn't get lost in what we're looking at, a potential $9 to $10 million price tag for some of the bells and whistles that we can do a little differently early, get the thing fully operational with the plan, and then as we go on, I think my personal belief is we probably won't want a commercial kitchen there. You could feed thousands of people with a commercial kitchen, and yet we're only going to have a few hundred onsite. Some of those things may be either decided later to fully implement, to change, you know, we'll keep our options open, but that's really been the discussion from the board level. And reading your letter, I'm nervous that what's been communicated is, we're not going to operate the full facility versus we're not going to build all the bells and whistles that in the long-term plan we intend to have there.
Well, and I appreciate your clarification on that. There was a broad public debate and discussion and lots of community output in Fullerton, Anaheim, and other cities about what the facility would represent and the services it would provide, and so if that's going to change, I think we need to have some additional public hearings.
That's what I'm telling you. The plan's not going to change. Repeat, we're not changing the plan, but I fear someone, I'm not going to do it today because there's a lot of people listening, I'd kind of like to know who that someone is later, though, someone has told you that if we don't build a full million-dollar commercial kitchen, the plan's in jeopardy. That's inaccurate.
We're not debating the status of a kitchen, per se, but we are concerned and we have been advised that the facility may not be built as originally discussed, and if that's changing, then on all aspects, we would like to discuss it further with all of you. But the operations and maintenance plan, and there were many components to that, the social services that would be provided, the security, the transportation, all that.
We know what the plan is, exactly.
Right, that be intact as well.
Okay. Supervisor Spitzer?
Yeah, this is why I didn't want to move the public comment to this point, because now, you know, Item 58, in about four hours, we're going to have this conversation, which is the disconnect I was concerned about. Supervisor Nelson and I walked the facility, and I believe, and will know better when we get to the item, I think we're on the exact same page. And that is that every promise, because you know I hosted with you and everybody else the community town halls and the churches, and I met with private businesses, we made a lot of promises, no walk-ups, right, reservation only, security, screening to make sure people didn't have felonies or warrants. I mean, we made a lot of community promises. I think you heard Supervisor Nelson just say, and I'm absolutely adamant, none of those promises we made to the community about how it's operated or the services we will provide, vis-à-vis wraparound, right? It's not an armory, and it's not the shelter here in Santa Ana. It's not a place for people just to sleep or feel, get some community protection, if you will, safety. It's to provide services for those who have been pre-identified, to have the best ability to move into permanent housing or some type of transitional housing. And we'll get this on the record later, because this is the problem, right? You have a speaker, and the item hasn't even been called yet. I want you to maybe have your staff monitor, you can watch the meeting later, because I know you've got to go, but I believe we'll have all those assurances by Susan Price and Mr. Kim on the record. The point, though, and I think Supervisor Nelson, with his leadership and his adamacy, adamancy, adamacy, if that's a word, being adamant, is that we have a place with a roof, and we should serve people because we have a terrible problem, and we have a place we could put people even while we're constructing. And that's really the heart or the gravity of the question. Can we do that all at the same time? And that's what's compelling us. But, Chris, I am telling you, and I think I told you via text because you reached out to me, I don't believe in any way whatsoever we're changing any of the commitments we made to the community.
Okay, that's comforting here, I appreciate that. I'm sorry to take up time now. We have a council meeting starting in four hours, so my only opportunity to speak to the board was here. We aren't disputing--
Make sure Supervisor Spitzer gets that. She couldn't speak if we didn't do it now, just so you know.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
But I just want to, I want to just underscore, we value the leadership of this board and the county staff in serving the homeless. Nobody's questioning that at all.
Right.
We just want to ensure that we continue to collaborate with you to ensure the homeless population is served as well as the surrounding neighborhoods, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments, and when your meeting starts in four hours, we're still going to be here.
Enjoy.
All right, next speaker, please. Robert Lowden.
I'm Robert Lowden from Brea. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for postponing the Public Works project that would require the homeless to vacate their homeless camp on the banks of the Santa Ana River. They have no place to go. You know, back to the homeless camps, the, it's an ideal camp, it's an ideal camp spot for the homeless. There's drainage, there's a gentle slope for drainage for when it rains, and they have a bathroom. The bathroom is the sands of the Santa Ana River.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you for your comments.
Okay.
All right, next speaker, please.
Next four speakers after Lou Noble, are Scott Kutschel, David Lamb, Kurt Kostognya, and Andrew Richmond.
Good morning, everybody. One scripture here. "When foreigner resides in your land, you must not oppress him." This is from the Lord, Leviticus 1933. Now, we've seen this oppression of the homeless situation out here by our law enforcement has been giving an orders from cities and now out there in the riverbed with the Orange OC Works trying to disguise a maintenance so they could get rid of them, but they did postpone that until next year because they would be looking bad if they do it during Christmas. Many people out there are citizens, are people that work here, are actually, we don't understand that the recession, it hasn't been, it hasn't been over, but this is emergency between the shelter, waiting for the shelters, let's open the safe zone like I've been saying, and the safe zone is right there, right there on the riverbed while they wait, but this not, we've got to keep them because if we throw them out of there, where are they going to go, in the streets, in the cities? Because there is no other place. Courtyard is full. Many other cities are throwing them out here to this site. There is no other places for them, and that's why they stay there. They were being pushed to the river at one time. Now they can't, they got up from up there, but this is an emergency that is happening now, and we need to--
Please wrap up your comments. All right, thank you.
The safe zones is an ideal--
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Greg Walgenbach, Anaheim. I direct the Office of Life, Justice, and Peace for the Diocese of Orange, and I'm speaking here on behalf of Bishop Van. On Item 21, the Restaurant Meals Program, we've already submitted a letter of support along with the St. Thomas More Society and Catholic Charities of Orange County. I want to thank the work of the Coalition that's been working very hard to move this forward, and we absolutely support moving this forward to implementation, to help the most vulnerable members of our community, those who are elderly, those who are disabled, those who are homeless, to be able to use their CalFresh for prepared food. I speak as a father of four children. We don't get to go out to eat very much, but sometimes we'll pick up a prepared, you know, cooked chicken from the store, which is actually a pretty inexpensive way to have a healthy meal, and that's something that would be able to be done by folks with CalFresh stamps under this, under the change of the rule, as well as other ways to get prepared food and ways that are more easily accessible to people. So I want to strongly urge you to move forward on the implementation, and thank you for consideration.
Right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jerry Rivera. The next four speakers are Rebecca Whitehead, Eric Hernandez, Curtis Gamble, and Dwight Smith.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. My name is Jerry Rivera. I'm the Program Manager at OC Food Access Coalition here in Santa Ana. I am also a resident of the City of Santa Ana. I'm here to speak on Item 21, the Restaurant Meals Program. I feel that the Restaurant Meals Program will help address food accessibility and security issues, as was mentioned earlier by our previous speaker, for most nutritionally vulnerable residents of the county, who are senior, disabled, and homeless residents. I was inspired earlier by the presentation that was done early on about cutting the red tape to the red carpet. I asked the board to approve the Item 21, to provide the service, cutting that red tape, to providing a service to all of our residents in the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good morning. I'm Rebecca Whitehead, and I'm from Irvine, California, and I am here to advocate for Item 21, the Restaurant Meals Program. Because, to put it frankly, CalFresh isn't working to its full potential, because it's excluding people like the elderly, like disabled, and like the homeless, and basically anybody who doesn't have access to make their own food at home. And so to address this, this is what the Restaurant Meals Program is going to do. And also, the current program in place contributes to this stigma that essentially dehumanizes these types of people. Because, like, that warm feeling you get, like, when you have a warm meal, like, that's happiness, that's being human, and that's something that these people don't have right now. And also, CalFresh, yes, addresses food insecurity and problems, but not for everyone affected. They're missing a huge majority of this, which is what Restaurant Meals Program is trying to address. And, listen, I'm a debater, I'm on the OCC Speech and Debate Team. My mind is wired to poke holes in arguments, but this can work, and we've seen that it can absolutely work in other places, and that's why Restaurant Meals Program will turn this essentially ineffective program, or not effective to its potential, to its best of its abilities, to be the most effective that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, good morning, board. My name is Curtis Gamble. I'm an activist for the homeless. Also, I'm a military veteran, Navy military veteran. I'd like to give you guys a few little handouts, real quick. This is a list of 36 organizations, most of them churches, that help throughout Orange County with the homeless as far as food and shelter are concerned. And then there's a couple other things I want to just kind of highlight. I want to let you know that Fullerton has a city code that allows up to 12 individuals to stay in the churches, and I'd like to see other cities have that code, like, you know, Santa Ana and Anaheim. And then, number two, the riverbed. I'd like to see more people come out the riverbed. I see a lot of people here in the Santa Ana Shelter, which I congratulate everybody on that, I love that. The courtyard. Also, I'd like to see the 1,000 North Kramer Place. I'd like to see the phases, one, two, three. I think that's great. The other thing is public transportation. We also need bus passes, 38 bus passes. And the other thing is safe zones. Lou had mentioned that safe zones are what we need, we need to start acting on that, whether it be like places like Mary's Kitchen or the La Palma Park where they already have storage. But anyway, this is what the EBT card looks like. I have about $300 on this card. I usually get $184 every month, but I can't spend it at McDonald's, Burger King, Wendy's, anywhere like that. So I'd like to see that change. I can only eat at 7-Elevens. I am a diabetic as of two or three months ago, so I can't eat anywhere, you know, just anywhere now, so I really need this card to be passed, and I appreciate that. Thank you, guys, very much.
Supervisor Spitzer?
Mr. Gamble, you and I have spent some time chatting at the, across the street, and you put together this guide, and you gave it to me, and I asked our staff to, one, verify the veracity of all this, Mr. Kim, and then see if this is something that we could republish, if you will, and hand out. This is one of the most comprehensive guides to all the services in the county that I've personally seen. Now, it might be available, like, say, through 211, but Mr. Gamble and I, he's a former bus driver for OCTA, and he, you put this together yourself, right, Mr. Gamble?
It was to help all the people, really, everybody. It was so supportive of everybody. Information came from everywhere.
Well, this is an outstanding effort, and I would, if this kind of information, if we could re-verify it and update it if necessary, whatever, but then if we, if you could ask Susan and her staff to potentially think about handing this out, you know, and making it a county publication with the appropriate credits, this is very impressive. I mean, this is right in one place.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Gamble, you deserve a lot of credit, and thanks for grabbing me and making sure I understood that you did this, okay? Appreciate it, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dwight Smith. After that is Eve Garrow, Morgan Denjes, Larry Haynes, and Kevin Johnson.
Madam Chairwoman, Board of Supervisors, my name is Dwight Smith. I'm with the Catholic Worker in Santa Ana, and for 20 years, maybe 21 now, we've been serving soup kitchen food, hot food, to the homeless in the civic center, and we've been providing emergency shelter. I'd like to specifically address the concept of fraud with the Restaurant Meals Program. I can think of no better way to diminish fraud than to implement restaurant meals. It was my common experience when we sheltered families some eight years ago, that those families would meet with friends at the food for less, and they would buy $1,100 worth of food in exchange for $700 cash. I don't know why people don't check that or supervise it or whatever, but it's common knowledge on the street that you can get 70 cents on the dollar for food stamps. In the Restaurant Meals Program, no change is offered. It's not like a guest card, I mean, a gift card. You pay for your meal, and you don't get any change back. And most of the organizations that are accepting restaurant meals, EBT cards, are major organizations, and they're members of the California Restaurant Association. They're not going to, they're not going to risk their franchise for the change on a happy meal. I think one of the best ways the county could address the possibility that people are defra-- Not only that, the City of Santa Ana has made the use, the preparation of county food, stamped food, illegal within the city limits. The only reliable way to serve the 400 people at the courtyard is to let McDonald's do it, or Jack in the Box, or Subway. No one else is going to be able to do that outside of the county jail. And by the way, a kitchen, a commercial kitchen for 200 people, we did it for $64,000. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Chairwoman Bartlet and Supervisors. My name's Eve Garrow. I'm from the ACLU of Southern California, Dignity for All Project, and I'm here to also speak on behalf of the Restaurant Meals Program. As you might know, the United States stands out as having the highest levels of food insecurity and hunger among all rich nations, and that is mostly because the benefits of the SNAP program, known here in California as CalFresh, are really too tiny to last people throughout the month. They last about half the month, and that's according to a report by the Office of the President of the United States. So there's nothing we're going to do here today to solve that problem, but there are things that the county can do right here and right now to help ease the very real threat of hunger that faces some of our most vulnerable residents, and one of them is the Restaurant Meals Program, which allows people, as other speakers have said, to use their benefits to buy prepared foods. Why is that important? I'm just going to give you one example. So, honestly, I will never forget visiting an acquaintance of mine, a formerly homeless gentleman who has advanced Parkinson's disease. When he was living in a shelter, his life was very hard, and so I expected that he would be thrilled in his new apartment, but what I found instead is that he was very terrified, actually. He was too poor to afford pots and pans and cooking utensils, so he didn't have any, and quite frankly, given his disabilities, he couldn't really grip, like, grip a pot or a pan. Cooking was very dangerous for him and almost out of the question. When I visited him, he was hungry and he was scared. The Restaurant Meals Program would just make sense for him. It would give him greater access to food so that he could better use the benefits that he has in a safe and clean and dignified manner.
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to say, it's totally within the county's control, and only counties can decide whether to implement the program, so we really encourage you to do so. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Morgan Denjes. I volunteer with Dwight Smith at the Catholic Worker, and I also wanted to speak in support of the Restaurant Meals Program. He talked to you a little bit about the risk of fraud. I wanted to focus a little bit more on the waste in the way that the CalFresh program is currently implemented. Many of my friends down at the Transit Center and throughout the county that currently receive CalFresh benefits, they can't use them in any kind of effective sort of way because they don't have the means to prepare the food themselves. So they're required to purchase things that are oftentimes more expensive, prepackaged things, you know, chips, crackers, things that won't go bad, that don't require cold storage, but that's a very inefficient way to spend your grocery budget. This sort of counterintuitively would allow them to be more effective with the money that they are receiving for their food, and I think it would really go a long way to helping relieve some of the problems that they've been facing, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, I'm Larry Haynes. I'm the Executive Director of Mercy House, and I live in Costa Mesa, California. I'm here to lend my support to Item Number 21, the Restaurant Meals Program. Just very briefly, it strikes me as an improvement on the current system, provides benefit to those most in need, and adds stimulation to local businesses, so I hope this is something that you'll support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mohammed Ali. I helped organize a coalition that is advocating for the Restaurant Meals Program, and that is why I'm here today. The Restaurant Meals Program is the most efficient way of resolving food insecurity. Rather than having private faith-based organizations serving in parks and on street corners, we can have restaurants do it. We can have people eat in dining establishments, people being able to wash their hands, people essentially getting food for cheaper. Think of it as an economy of scale. It is more efficient to have large companies tackle the problem of food insecurity. A big problem with government inefficiency is the silo effect. Listen to your community. Your community is telling you that we need the Restaurant Meals Program. Mercy House is here telling you that. Illumination Foundation endorses this program. The bishop, the Catholic bishop of Orange County, sent a representative to tell you that this is something that's necessary. 211 of Orange County is telling you this is necessary. Orange County Food Access Coalition is telling you that this is necessary. Second Harvest Food Bank, Western Center on Law and Poverty, ACLU of Southern California, the Catholic Worker, Catholic Charities, Mary's Kitchen, His House of Placentia, your community is telling you that this is necessary. You all unanimously approved the courtyard. You unanimously approved Susan Price's position. If you do not want government waste, please listen to Susan Price. Please listen to your employees that are telling you we need this program. If you want to avoid spending $64,000 or $1 million on a commercial kitchen at Kramer Place, give people access to prepared food through the Restaurant Meals Program and make it so that their CalFresh benefits are no longer a waste. Please listen to your community today and approve the Restaurant Meals Program.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm here to speak about the Kramer Place. My wife and I have been involved with many organizations, churches, and we've been working with the homeless for a number of years. We were there at the public hearings in 2014 for the Kramer Place, and we're just wondering, what's going on? I mean, in 2016, you were able to move and open the courtyard. People were able to inhabit the place under construction while build-out was being done. Why can't we do that with Kramer? Why can't we open it and let these people who need a place, a safe place to stay, have this place, even under construction? We can do it in phases. We don't have to have it all nice, shiny, built up, and available for them. If you ask most of the people who are out on the street, who are out in the riverbed, they don't care. They just want a roof and walls around them to protect them from the elements. My wife and I made friends with a friend, with a man from Kenya, and he said that we are fed better, our homeless are fed better, but they are not cared for better. And this is in Kenya. So my urgency right now is to open that place and make it available for the people, and also, why don't we put together a timeline and publish it to show how the progress of this property is being done, so the public can see what's being done and be able to, you know, track what's going on? And I also support the Meals Program, so we need to get, give these people the dignity that they deserve, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next four speakers after--
I'm here to speak on the Kramer location. I think it should be done in-- I think it should be done in phases. Once we get Phase One done, we can bring in certain people that are in trades to help with Phase Two and Three, and bring in the EBT cards to some of the restaurants like Carl's Jr., McDonald's, and those places, because a lot of us don't have places to cook, or we don't have pots and pans, and we need people that can provide, and the churches provide. I mean, we go to meals almost every night, lunches. We had one group chased out of Fullerton Transportation, and they still come back. And they need to be done. We need places where these people can get good meals, and that's all I've got to say.
Okay, well, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Doan. If it wasn't for, we want to say thank you for the opening of the courtyard, me and my husband. It's been a great pleasure to be a resident at the courtyard. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Michael West. I live in Santa Ana, and first, I wanted to thank the Board for authorizing the Courtyard Shelter. My son and I unfortunately became homeless earlier this year after the death of three members of my immediate family. Between the funeral costs and the fact that one of the members of my family was my brother, who was also my business partner, we ended up losing our home, and we went to the courtyard. I didn't really know what to expect. We got over there, and one of the things that we were pleasantly surprised by was the vast number of services that are available right there at the facility. We were able to talk to many different agencies that we probably wouldn't have even known to approach if they hadn't been right there at the facility. We got a lot of help, a lot of direction. We got a couple of traffic tickets taken care of. I have some work being done by legal aid on my tax situation. One of the things that I really like about the courtyard is the fact that the staff there treats everybody with dignity and respect. When a person is homeless, one of the first things that's heaviest hit is your feelings of self-worth, and to be treated with dignity and respect is really important. We went to another shelter where that wasn't the case. They were a little condescending, and your self-esteem, as a result, ends up taking a heavy hit. But the people that are at the courtyard seem like they're really interested, they're engaged with the people that are staying there, and they really, they really want to help. And again, I just want to thank you guys for authorizing that facility. If it weren't for the courtyard, I don't know what my son and I would have done. And thank you for your time today.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow Supervisors. My name is Brad Fieldhouse. I'm the Executive Director of a nonprofit organization called CityNet, and we are helping to, we're the Community Resource Mobilizer Group, helping the courtyard see the successes that it's seeing. I'm here to give you some numbers, and give you sort of a 70-day update. We're at 70 days today, and it's a busy, happening place, as you all know. So I'm here on behalf of our partnership with the Midnight Mission, as well as the hundreds of volunteers that have been helping out to make that place a success. So 70 days is what we've been open last week. I'm gonna give you a snapshot for a week. It's also early in the month, but we served 6,838 meals were served last week, all done by volunteers, all done by people who are working tirelessly behind the scenes to make that happen. That was done by 34 different groups, 32 of which were formerly serving in the civic center and have now come over and have a partnership with us, serving at the courtyard. We have over 60 total agencies that are coming and doing feedings, but it's about 34 roughly on a week to serve all 21 meals. Of those groups that were there last week, 296 volunteers came and actually served the meals. So that's volunteers on-site that are coming in and out of the courtyard to serve those And those volunteers' combined time was 623 hours, of just one week's of investment of community members that care. Some of those are brand-new organizations that have come for the first time. For example, last week, we had the Irvine Unified Mosque was there for the first time, and some of these groups have been doing this literally for decades, caring. Supportive Services, we're averaging about 35 different agencies on-site now on a weekly basis, and that's only going to increase as we coordinate and make sure that like-minded groups are working together. And most importantly is, we've been able to track 28 street exits because of the courtyard. So these are people that came into the courtyard, got stabilized, took advantage of all these different agencies that are coming and are now no longer there, and in some sort of more permanent situation.
Okay.
My time's expired. If anyone's interested in helping, you can email us at courtyard@citynet.org. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
After Smithy, the last three speakers are Brooke Weitzman, Kavas Getibin, and Stephen LeBeuf.
Good morning, Board. Smithy, the Civic Center Roundtable. Roundtable would like to thank the Board for putting Item 21, Restaurant Meals Program, on your agenda today, with special thanks to our County Care Coordinator, Susan Price, for bringing it to the table and for your approval. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Brooke Weitzman. I just wanted to start off by echoing the concerns Supervisor Spitzer has made about the order of the comments. Having the comments so far removed does make it difficult to focus on each item at a time. It requires people who already have to take time out of the workday to come and speak before you during regular business hour meetings to be here much longer than they would if they could come during a specific agenda item, if they could keep an eye on the video feed or check the timing of how the meeting was coming along. But what I'm here to talk to you today about is the Restaurant Meals Program. I just want to echo what you've heard from some people before. The Restaurant Meals Program was specifically designed for the most vulnerable people, most vulnerable residents, the seniors who are no longer able to cook, disabled folks who have limits on their ability to cook, and homeless people who don't have access to places to store and cook food. It's certainly not going to end hunger or food, or lack of adequate food, just like the shelter is not immediately ending homelessness, but this is a simple step that you all, as the county, can take toward reducing food insecurity and toward ending hunger. Orange County has a huge population and growing population of seniors. We have a lot of housed people with disabilities. All of the work that you and the housing authorities have done to get a lot of our veterans off the street into housing means we have a lot more veterans who are in housing, but still are reliant upon food stamps to have adequate food. And in terms of getting enough nutrition, that's very difficult to do for all the reasons you've already heard. So approving this and providing access to hot meals, to prepared food, particularly to those who can't prepare it or don't have ways to safely store food, would really make a difference in their ability to get adequate nutrition. I just want to kind of give you an example of a scenario where this could have made a difference. I had a client a few years ago who was a Vietnam veteran, who was reliant on VA pension and food stamps. And VA pension, if you're not familiar with it, is basically like SSI, but the VA version, and pays a tiny bit more. And so because of the restrictions on his food, he was still cooking because he had to get food, he had to cook, despite the fact that he knew he had become forgetful and was maybe no longer safely using a kitchen. He ended up leaving his stove on.
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Absolutely. He ended up leaving his stove on and causing damage, and was worried he'd lose his housing, and that could have been avoided by having access to Restaurant Meals, so I'd ask that you approve.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. My name is Stephen LeBeuf. I'm a lifelong Orange County resident. I was born in Fullerton, owned homes in Costa Mesa, Newport, and Anaheim. I'm here to tout the benefits of the OC Courtyard. I was head trader of finance by, one of the largest firms in Orange County, in Irvine. As interest rates hit zero, so did my commission checks, and everything else fell apart. In 2014, my wife was diagnosed with terminal cancer, so I couldn't go to work anymore. At one point, I had to call 211 with my wife and my daughter sitting in the car to go, I don't know where to go tonight. There was no place. 211 couldn't answer me. You could send your wife and your child here, but you gotta have to go here. I've been married for almost 20 years, so I stopped working to take care of my wife and put her through dialysis and all of the other stuff that goes along with that. A few months ago, a friend of mine came up to me just randomly and said, you and your wife should go to try the bus terminal. I'd never heard of it. I've never heard of anything like it. I was struggling day in, day out, just to pay another hotel bill. We'd lost the house. We'd lost everything. They told me about the courtyard. We came up here, and we've been there since. My wife feels safe there. She's made a couple of friends, which, when you have liver and kidney failure, it affects your brain function, too, so it's, it's been tough on all of us. And we found some friends here. And like I said, I grew up as, you know, oh, homeless people need to, you know, they need to do this, they need to do that. All of a sudden, I found myself being one of them, and it really humbled me. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. And that concludes the public comments portion of the agenda for today. We'll now proceed to the agenda for today's meeting. This agenda contains a brief description of each item to be considered. Except as otherwise provided by law, no action shall be taken on any item not appearing in today's agenda. The agenda is divided into sections. All matters on the consent calendar are approved by one motion unless a board member requests separate action on a specific item. So now move to item number 21.
Under Social Service Agency, authorized Social Service Agency to implement CalFresh Restaurant Meals Program.
Okay. If we could have someone from Social Services Agency, and perhaps Susan Price come forward, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Honorable Board Members. Mike Ryan from SSA.
Actually, it's good afternoon now.
Oh, good afternoon, yes.
Morning's gone by very quickly. I think, you know, based on the speakers, they're very favorable with regard to the Restaurant Meals Program. I know this is going to be a new program for Orange County, and, you know, we want it to be successful. I believe that, and if you could confirm, that you're gonna start with the highest need population, which are the red outlined areas on the map. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We plan on phasing this in and starting with the high-need areas and reaching out to restaurants in those areas and see how this moves forward and is successfully implemented.
Okay. So from the time it's implemented, what do you think is an adequate amount of time to be able to report back to the Board and to see if we need to make any tweaks to the program to make it successful before we move it out to other parts of the county?
Part of the process, we need to submit our plan to the state and get that approved, and that could take up 60 days.
Okay.
And then, once that's approved, then we'll move forward, and we'll come back to the Board. We'll develop a master agreement for restaurants to sign on. We'll come back to the Board at that time with the master agreement and seek your approval for that. And once we have that approval, then we'll start the process, and restaurants that are interested will have to apply with the federal government to be approved to participate in the program, and then they'll contact with us and sign on to the MOU, and then we'll start forward with this process. So I would say at least a year.
Okay. That's what I was thinking as well. Okay, because I think it's important that we set up, not only the program, but that we have the metrics in place, and the Board is able to get some feedback on how the program is progressing after it starts to roll out.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Supervisor Spitzer?
Yeah, thank you very much. I was actually surprised by all the speakers today. To me, this is like a no-brainer. When I got briefed on it, I was thinking to myself, you know, we have a lot of people who don't have the resources to store fresh food, right? And the nutritional value. When I heard one of the speakers, I don't recall who it was, doesn't really matter, talking about McDonald's and Jack in the Box, that's not actually what I would argue is a sustainable food diet. I guess if you're not eating well at all, it's probably better than nothing, but certainly it contributes other issues, high salt, fat, other potential problems, but I guess when you're really in your dire straits, you need to eat, right? So to me, I was, I wanted to make sure that we're dealing with fraud. You don't necessarily know, for a short while, I prosecuted welfare fraud, and I asked those questions that we still have the same, you can't buy alcohol. There's still gonna be enforcement oversight and audits. I mean, somebody talked about the value on the street, I think it was something on food stamps, 70%, 7 cents on the dollar or something, if you could do trade. I mean, you're never gonna prevent people from trying to game the system, but we have a whole population who's not eating. So I think in response to the Chair's questions about accountability, that we're, you're gonna be able to come back and tell us at some point about how we are ensuring that all the other mechanisms for any other government assistance program are being followed. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay. So all those other rules that apply through people who are misusing the system, they could still be subject to prosecution, just like with welfare fraud or Medi-Cal fraud, right?
Correct.
Okay. So in terms of the need, is, what's the innovation and motivation behind it? I mean, I guess I'm just trying to understand, what's the controversy? Why? There was a lot of speakers here today on a consent calendar item, on something that no one polled, except the Chair, to ask legitimate questions, but is there something we're missing? I guess the question is, before today, what was the controversy that kind of got out in the community that prompted so many people to come here to make sure we were in support of this?
I'm not sure there was a controversy. I think that just shows the passion for the program.
Okay. All right. Well, to me, this is long overdue, and it's the humanitarian thing to do, as long as you have the accountability and you have the practices and oversight. This is a very important program, from my perspective, to make sure people are getting proper nutrition. It's all part of the wraparound services, right? You know, when I taught high school and kids came to school hungry, you can't teach them. I mean, people have to eat. It's a basic human function, so I'm really actually very pleased and proud you brought this forward. I appreciate the leadership of the Board and the Supervisors who were behind this to make sure this happened, and I'm enthusiastically supportive. I appreciate the fact you're gonna come back and make sure that we know at some point that it's not being abused. Thank you.
All right. I think we all look forward to your program that you want to implement for, you know, starting in this one area of the county and rolling it out and see how it goes, so. Okay, with that, I will make a motion to approve this item?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by myself, second by Supervisor Spitzer. Any objection? All right, that item passes. So at this point, we will recess for lunch and close session. Thank you.